If everyone would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get underway, there's a couple of things I'd like to go over. First, I want to welcome everybody to the November meeting of the Rondicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. The fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exits. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The minutes of our meetings are recorded and they're televised and our secretary, Michelle, is keeping minutes. Her minutes are not intended as a transcript, but they are intended to be a reflection of what takes place. So when you come to the podium to speak, please be sure to articulate your name and your address so she can keep track of who's discussing what for the purpose of the minutes. We follow the items on the agenda in the order in which they appear. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. The procedure that we follow is this: Once the case is called, the applicant or their representatives come to the podium. They identify themselves, or herself, and state their address. Then they pause, raise their right hand. I will swear them in, and then they will present their case. During the presentation of the case, members of the board can ask questions and engage in discussions with the applicant or each other occasionally. Once that whole process is complete, we then open it up for public input. There are three categories of public input that we've identified so far. Those who wish to speak in favor of the application, and we hear all of them first. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, and we hear all of them second. And then those who would like to talk to us about the application. They're not for it, they're not against it, but they want to talk to us about some aspect of the application, and they get heard last. Then, after all, the public input has been heard. The applicant or their representative will get an opportunity to address anything that came up during the public hearing. And once that has been concluded, then we close the hearing with respect to that case, and we'll move on to the next case on the agenda. After all the cases have been heard, the board takes a short break, and when we return from that, we deliberate on each of the cases. We deliberate on the cases in the order in which the applicants are present and the order they appear on the agenda. So if the first applicant on the agenda has left, we would take... But the second applicant is here, we would take the second applicant first. Then we would deal with any other applicants who are present in the order on the agenda. Then we would go back to the top of the agenda and take the cases for which the applicants have already left. During the deliberation portion of the meeting, there is no opportunity for any further public input unless the board specifically requests it. You do not have to stay. If you're interested in knowing what the board's decision is with respect to any particular application, you can watch it on TV, or you can call into the zoning and planning department at Town Hall tomorrow morning after nine, and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was. The only other thing that I have is tonight is the first Monday of the month, and tomorrow is the first Tuesday of the month of November, which means that it is election day. And one of the most important responsibilities that we have as citizens is to participate in our government. We have given that opportunity, but it is an obligation on our part. So I encourage everyone to go out and vote tomorrow. It doesn't matter who you're voting for. What's important is that you vote. There are people in the world who would die, literally, to have the opportunity to be able to participate in and shape their government. We have that opportunity, and we've fought for that, and people have died for us to be able to continue that tradition. So it is incumbent upon all of us, not just the people in the room, but also the people who are watching, and who are residing in the town, and the county, and state, and the country, to go out tomorrow and vote. Very, very important. And as I often tell my scouts who are not yet of voting age, if you don't vote, I don't want to hear you complain. So with that, we'll open our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1811-1. Upon the matter of request by William Bradley for an area variance to maintain an existing front yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height, linear footage, and non-conforming fence type on premises 112 Seaview Avenue in an R3 residential district.
William Bradley, 112 Seaview Ave. You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. And attached to your application was the consent of the property owner for you to make this application?
Yes. Okay. I moved in. My landlord is my old neighbor from when I was a child. My parents live five houses up. I moved in because I needed a double hip surgery and wanted to be close to my parents for my son. We lived there for a year and a half without any kind of problem or issue besides the weirdest neighbor stuff. We used to park side by side, my wife in the driveway, me on the grass. There's a row of trees. It would help not only block our dogs in, because they wouldn't look past everything, but it gave us privacy too. We found out over the summer, our neighbor straight across the street has a camera pointed dead at our house in our yard, all the way up in it. So after I got a call from the town that I was going to be fined for parking there anymore, I decided to build a privacy fence. I looked at town code, I saw the privacy code, what could be considered a decorative wall or any kind of privacy. I used lattice to build a fence. It started as just a small fence. Me and my wife got the smart idea that we'd make it a little higher, throw a sheet on it in the summertime. We got a projector, and we would let all the kids in the neighborhood watch movies in our front yard. I was renting unaware of what I had to get to make it legal. Was unaware of a couple stipulations on how the property was and what was called what and how it had to be. I thought where I built the fence was the backyard of the residence. It used to be. I guess it changed in some recent history, and that's what leads us to there. I'm just trying to fight it for my privacy and to have somewhere me, my wife, and son and dogs can enjoy without having being spied on by the neighbors.
Your property backs up to the 590 Expressway, right?
No. It's behind our property is the parking right where the Jackrabbit is.
Oh, okay, so Seabreeze is...
Yeah, it's Seabreeze parking lot right behind us.
Did that used to be a road there? When you said that your backyard, you thought was...
The park, where the parking is, when I was a little kid, there was another family that lived there, and that was the front of the house. That's where their gate was, that's where they came in, that's where they parked. Seabreeze kind of used eminent domain to claim it once they built a fence all the way down. So I guess that's when it changed. I'm not 100% sure.
All right. Now, you're asking for an area variance for an eight-foot-high fence?
Not completely.
Well, the white lattice section is eight feet tall.
Yeah, that's eight foot tall. That's where we did the little movie theater.
Would your ability, and the only problem I have with your application is that you, in your application, you ask for this to be allowed for while you're there?
Yes.
The problem is that we can't do that. If we grant an area variance, it runs with the property, so anybody after you has the same ability to do that, and it stays there. Would a six-foot fence at that white part accommodate your privacy interests and your ability to throw a sheet and entertain the neighborhood children in the summer?
Yeah, I could take that down two feet. The only concern I have is to where the four-foot section of lattice is up front, I built little two-foot sections to screw in along top of that, take them out if I needed to, according to what I was told by you guys. My dog is a jumper, and when I was going through their hip surgery is when I got him, he was my therapy to get walking again. When he is not with me, but he can see me, he will do whatever it takes to get to me. And he can jump it easy. That's why I put the extra two foot on the four foot. If I can do six foot across, I'd be perfectly happy.
Because as I looked at it, your fence is essentially running parallel with the back foundations of the houses on either side?
Yes.
Which is normally where a six-foot fence would be allowed, because normally the house would be sitting in the front and not behind that is the common approach. So would a six-foot fence, would that accommodate it?
Yeah, that would work perfect.
I drove by the property the other day. It's just, it's an unsightly fence combination, because you've got hodgepodge of different pieces.
It's supposed to be painted white where you see the wood. I just...
But I mean, some of it's got lattice on it, some of it doesn't. It's not a... Even if it were all painted white, it still doesn't look like the one section closer to the driveway looks like it's a different type of fence.
The entire front section is lattice. The side, I bought a... I couldn't do vinyl lattice and make a frame with it and have it do anything. It would just buckle. So I bought real fence slats and made it so I could swing it out or do what I had to to get in the back. I have a motorcycle that I pull in my backyard for winter time to store it. But it was all bought brand new, it's all been painted. The white hodgepodge, what you're talking about, was brand new and painted by my hand. That's the only difference, and you can't see it from straight on the house. If you're looking straight at it, I'm sure you can see it if you go into the driveway and look sideways, but I don't think it looks terrible.
It just didn't look...
Did you have it swung out on Saturday?
No. No, it is completely straight to the house. So if you look at it straight from the street, the only fence you see is the lattice.
Right.
If you go to the side, it's white.
There's white lattice that's the eight-foot portion, and then there's natural wood tone the rest of the way.
No, the two-foot section of lattice that I put on top of the white lattice isn't painted yet, so it's still wood color. The pictures you guys have are four-foot sections of wood lattice that I put up there just while I was building it, because that was four feet tall, and my dog had no problem getting over it. So I put it up there and set it against the trees just to block them in the backyard for the time being. The, like I said, the section I did alongside the driveway up to the corner of the house was only done that way, because if I did it with that lattice, it would have had no structural integrity at all. I do building maintenance for a living. I'm certified HVAC. I know little about how to try and do it right, so...
Well, I mean, you know, two things I think we should, if we were going to give you the variance, I think it should be walked back a little bit to the side. I mean, there is, from your map, it is forward of the front, it's forward 10 feet of the front foundation of the house.
Yes.
Right?
I just did that because the house sits back so far.
Well, you got about 55 feet from the middle of the lot. The lot looks to be, if I'm not mistaken, the lot looks to be on that side about 110 feet long or deep. The house sits on the second half.
There is no house up front anymore. That's town property that I've been taking care of and making sure I've done the lawn maintenance for.
I'm just thinking if the fence, if the fence was done with a nice clean six-foot-high fence from the corner of the front of the house, straight across the lot line, might look a little more presentable, and if it was one...
You're just talking about the section that I'm saying is on the side?
Well, no, I saw it on the front too. I mean, when you face the very front of the house...
There's none on the front.
Yeah, I looked, and I can honestly say I don't remember 100%.
I guarantee you that there's no difference...
It just looked like they were pieced together.
There were fence slats that I still have left over. That's why I was going to say, the ones on the side of the house are only five feet tall where it swings out. The ones you had a picture of were laying there. They weren't screwed in, they weren't anything. It was extra material.
Well, there's, the eight-foot section was white.
Yeah, there's an eight-foot section that's a big square, then there's more lattice that runs down. That was four feet.
Right.
Above that, I did wood lattice that I haven't painted yet. Where he's talking about was, I didn't have the two-foot sections of lattice up yet. He sees my building materials in the corner of that picture laying there. They weren't set up.
There was no picture. I don't know what picture you're talking about.
They don't have the picture that code enforcement sent you.
Okay, I didn't bring that with me. It was in the town computer system.
I just pulled in front of your house and looked.
Yeah. You saw materials laying there against the lattice fence.
I was looking straight at it.
I know. I'm telling you, it's the left-hand corner. That's where I had all my... If you're looking at the house, it was to the left. That's where I had everything stacked up.
Yeah, I saw that part, but the right part, right by the driveway, the tall part?
There was...
There was nothing there. It was just fence.
And if I may, just for the board's information, under the code, fencing shall be constructed of materials commercially available for fencing purposes and shall be uniform in appearance. So that's the code provision we're looking at.
Again, that's my issue with the fence. I'm probably okay with having a fence there. I would like it moved back to the lot line or to the corner of the house. And I'm okay even, in my opinion, to give you a six-foot-high fence.
If it's moved back to the corner of a house, then I got no way to get into the backyard from the front of the house. I would have to go all the way through the house to do it.
Well, I see. What you're saying is you're coming in and then you're pulling to the left to pull in behind the fence. Is that what you're saying?
No, when I pull up, we pull up straight in the driveway. To the left of us getting out is where you see the regular slat fence.
Where it opens.
We can open that right there. If I want to go in the backyard. If I put it all the way back to the house, there's no entrance or exit out of the backyard besides the house.
You'd have to put a gate in the front.
And redo every bit of it? What if I put lattice where that gate is instead of doing that fencing all?
See, I don't think the lattice is actually considered a fence. Again, Michelle, is there a...
Even if it's framed in like the front is, it's...
The code, I don't know. I've seen lattice used as fencing before.
There is a definition of the code of fence that I think would probably include lattice. It's really anything that's used for the function and purpose, such as a boundary, privacy, decorative, and safety. So, you know, if it's being used for privacy, I'd say the lattice is probably a fence under the code.
It's the exact code I was talking about that I used based on not knowing I needed a permit to begin with.
I would like to add with the attorney's confirmation that he's also looking for the variance for the non-conforming fence type. So this is the front yard, so it should be only open type picket or the like.
Well, the lattice is open, right?
Yeah, yeah. You can see it.
Split rail or open type. I don't think that that's considered, Donna, if you want to chime in.
What kind of dog is it?
I have two American pit bulls.
I mean, would lattice be strong enough to hold them back if they jumped up against it?
I got plenty of screws in that, yeah. It's not my female I'm worried about. It's my male. He's got severe separation, so even if I'm out front mowing the lawn, he was six months old, and my wife caught him trying to get out of a second-story window, because he couldn't see me.
Again, I just think...
You can strength test it.
We need to look at something a little more...
I got about 20 screws in each of those sections.
Okay, I got a comment. I was just curious. As I look at the house from the road, and I see the eight-foot, and I see the other, the lower section, it looks to me like there's a whole row of arborvitae behind it.
The trees?
Yeah.
They were there before, and those don't stop them from jumping with the four-foot section. That's why I added the other.
No, I'm just looking, I'm thinking in terms of privacy and so on.
Yeah.
You've already got some arborvitae there.
Yeah.
And I totally agree with the six-foot across. I think that's a great idea. One of my questions is, when do the movies start so we can come down?
As soon as it gets warm.
Now, do you put that on? You must not put that screen up where the trees are. It must be on the other side.
Yeah, it's on the big eight-foot section, yeah. Last minute, I don't know what made us think of it, but...
So you figure late April, May will start?
Yeah. Make it a town thing.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
The only comment I have is I think we, just an opinion, I think we need to have a better example of what fence, what the fencing is going to look like, like some people do when they come in to ask for a fence variance or show us fence. They actually show us the type of fence. Again, what I remember the other day, the fence to me looked like it was a bunch of different things put together. I don't know if anybody else went down and looked at it.
Yeah, I agree. My issue with this is the uniformity of the fencing.
Right.
And, you know, one height, be uniform, and understand putting it together, but...
I have no problem changing it all to lattice. I can do that. I think that looks better than the regular fencing anyways, and that's all I wanted, was my privacy. You can still see through it, not as good as chain link. It's a little smaller, but I have no problem doing it. I already put a ton of money and time into it, and I got no problem doing it to make sure it's there.
Again, I think maybe if we saw what he meant, we...
Yeah, I have pictures on my phone. I'm sorry, I just got out of work. I'm on call. I didn't even think I was going to make it on time.
Do you have pictures on your phone?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Could I take a look? Maybe it would help. Nope, take... Yep, nothing personal.
That's why I see right there.
That picture.
Okay.
Near the driveway is where I got the six-foot slats, where it rolls. So the two-foot sections on the top are going to be painted white to match the bottom?
Yeah. And that'll make it six-foot.
And that would make it six-foot all the way across.
And then you could cut the eight-foot down to six-foot.
And that's the only thing I used the wood lattice for on top to make it a little different is because... That's what I was remembering. At $30 a section.
And for the record, you may want to describe what your, the pictures that you're looking at, Mr. LaPerry, just for the record.
Okay, just for the record, we're looking at, and again, this is kind of what we're talking about, it not being uniform. You've got two, two or three sections to the left, if you're facing the house, that are lattice, that are eight-foot sections of lattice that are laying down sideways. They're eight-by-fours. And then you have wooden lattice above that that's not painted the same color, and it's a different style of lattice. And then to the right section closer to the driveway, you have three eight-foot sections of lattice that stand tall that are framed in. Doesn't look that bad, but they're too tall.
Yeah.
The problem is, is you're...
I can take the extra two feet off that and cut it for that. That's why I said I can put them on the top there to make it uniform.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes?
I think we need to get a microphone so that the rest of the audience and TV can hear.
Anybody else want to see this?
We need to have you talking to the microphone so everybody else can hear.
Mr. Bradley?
Mr. Bradley?
Oh, sorry.
Would anybody else like to take a look at this picture?
I saw it.
You're good? Gentlemen down there, would you like to see the picture?
The extra two feet above the eight?
Show the...
Come down to six. I can cut it and put it where the non-uniform wood is.
If you could show it to them.
Yeah.
My idea would be to...
Sorry, it's touchy. I don't have it in my...
Remove the...
Move the wood off the two-foot wooden sections.
And make it all a uniform look.
Replace it with two feet of the same material? Yeah. I got the material to do it if I take it off the eight-foot.
Okay. I see, isn't it? He's talking about cutting the two feet off.
This is where the arborvitae is behind this part.
Putting it down, replacing the...
Oh, you're on painted stuff. It's the same material.
Yeah.
So it'll all be the same material, and it'll be two feet of white on top of four feet.
Six, six, it's 12 feet. He needs 16 feet of that, more than 16 feet of that.
So he's probably going to end up having to buy another sheet.
So if you cut the two feet off the top of the eight-foot section, you're still going to need to, and mounted it, the top of the, it's still not going to look uniform. It's still going to, because you're going to have some panels going vertical, and you're going to have some panels going horizontal. It's...
I can change the vertical one too. It's, if I cut that down to six foot, it's still uniformly the same type of lattice. It's not going to change the direction the lattice goes.
The framing's going to be different though.
Right. You're afraid, yeah. But if that's what, like I said, I'm willing to do. If you want me to turn it all sideways to fix it, make it no more than six feet, that's all I want to do. Make...
So if I understand correctly, I think what Mr. LaPerry's been talking about is having a uniform appearance in the front.
Yeah.
Six feet high, same material, framed the same way, so you can turn it horizontal, you can turn it vertical, however you want to, as long as it's the same all the way across for the six feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, just...
And you're willing to do that, right?
Yeah, I'm willing to do whatever dissatisfies.
I mean, just for the, just so it looks nice, and you know...
You're going to have to help my wife come weave her flower vines through. That wasn't fun.
Again, I, I mean, just a thought, I would, the two that you've got laying sideways?
Yeah.
I'd prop those up.
And do it that way.
And then add a couple on the end.
Yeah.
And then cut them all to six foot.
Okay, yeah.
And put a top rail across the top, and it would look gorgeous.
I'm just trying to keep a nice play area for my dog and privacy, so when we don't want to be out front watching movies, we can sit in our backyard without any cameras or anything.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. You're the property owner?
Yeah.
All right.
John Van Bredero, 93 Chadwell Road. I'm all in favor of BJ doing this. I mean, or William. Sorry about that. He's been very upfront with me, told me what he wanted to do. I wasn't quite sure what he was going to do, but I knew that he wanted privacy from some situations that were happening in the neighborhood, and I understood that. There are arborvitae there, but they end at a certain point, which allows people to see in the backyard. And so I was just like, yeah, okay, I understand what your problem is, and I understand where it's coming from. So...
So, yeah, okay, you can do that. Then the town sent the letter. I told him, we either have to take it down or you have to pursue the right to be able to keep it up. And, uh, he wanted to pursue the right to keep it up and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Um, so, and he's, I mean, the flowers that they've got growing through them and everything, I mean. That eight foot section could be considered for vines and stuff. I mean, it's absolutely gorgeous. Because he has beautiful vines growing through it and be, beautiful, beautiful flowers growing through it. And they really did take the time and effort to try and make it look really nice.
Mm-huh.
So, but I'm all in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about lattice, fencing, anything like that? Seeing none? Oh, yes ma'am. Step right up. Yep, wait till, wait, wait till the, you get to the microphone so we can hear you.
I live at one thirteen Seville, which is directly across.
And your name ma'am?
Joan Pardee.
Okay.
Is it permissible for me? I was told I had to take down my fence. Cause nobody liked it. And they took down three, they chopped down three, um, Sharon of Roses, which was giving me privacy. So now I'm all open to the neighborhood.
Who's they?
My neighbor next door.
No, that took it down.
They cut down three, three Sharon of Roses trees.
Your neighbors?
Yeah. And they, um, told me I had one day to take down a fence.
Was it on their property?
No, it was my fence.
I guess I'm confused as to how your neighbors would.
Thing is, they didn't like the way it looked. So now you're letting him have a lattice fence.
Well, what I'm.
Can I have a lattice fence?
What I'm trying to understand is who it is that told you you had to take down your Rose of Sharon and your fence?
The town of Arundecote.
I thought you said it was your neighbors.
Well, my neighbor came over finger pointing and said I had one day to get the fence down. And then when I called the town, they said I had to take it down.
So they didn't tell you that you could do the same thing that he's doing and ask for, where was your fence? What was it?
It was a very thin fence. It was all we could afford.
Okay, was it like a chicken wire fence or something?
Privacy.
Uh-huh.
Where we don't have privacy anymore. And then the minute we took it down, she brought out her two garbage pails, which she gets picked up every two weeks. And she put them right up to my door. And in the summer time, I can't open my kitchen door cause it smells so bad. So can I put up a lattice fence?
Well, you need to make an application. We'll come out and look at your property and, and decide what you, where you wanna put it. You need to let us know where you wanna put it and you can.
I wanna put it up against the garbage pails. So that I don't have to look at them and smell them.
If you submit an application like he did, right, we will come out and we will look at your property and we'll look at where you wanna put the fence. And we'll let you know if.
Why wasn't every, everything was fine. It was so pretty. I fixed it up so pretty.
I, I don't know anything about what you're talking about. We, we have nothing to do with what.
And then along came these neighbors and they all had eyes for my house. And then my neighbor tells me that the whole neighborhood is saying, get her out of the neighborhood. We don't want her here. That's me. I've been living there fifty years. These young couples moved in and they wanna get me out. They tell me, get out. That's what I got to say.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else that'd like to talk to us about the application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and, uh, move on to the next item on our agenda.
Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight one one dash two. Upon the matter of request by Caitlin Giordano for an area variance to install a six foot high side yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height. On premises one thirty-six Spruce Lane in an R one residential district.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Giardino, uh, one thirty-six Spruce Lane.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And you're our infamous corner lot case for tonight.
Yes.
And basically, if I understand your application correctly, you'd like to put a six foot high fence. Behind the cedar trees that are facing the, um, east portion of Spruce Lane. And your house is oriented to the north, but the town tells you that what you think of as your backyard is actually your side yard according to the town, right?
Correct.
And if it was your backyard, you'd be able to do it, but because it's your side yard, you're not.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. Um. I'm a little confused cause one line is red and one line is blue. I'm assuming the red one is already there. You've already got fencing up back there, right?
Yes, so there.
Blue line is a continuation.
Yep.
To the corner.
Right.
Or then it's gonna go north.
Towards the house, yeah.
In line with your neighbor's foundation or your foundation?
With mine.
With yours. What confuses me is the, what says here, the portion pending variance will amend permit. Once variant decision, variance decision is made. What's, what would change? What's different? I don't understand the, I don't understand what you're pointing.
Saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're saying is if we grant the variance, you're gonna amend your building permit for the fence to go to six feet instead of four.
Uh, yes. Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
So, so she put up the portion she could do and she's waiting to find out if she can keep it all uniformed six or if she's gotta drop it. And it's up to this meeting to determine that.
What scenario would prohibit her from going six instead of four?
Well, the reason why is it's a side yard. In side yard, you only can have four. And she would like six there.
Corner lot.
Just for the section where the trees are? But it wouldn't be an issue for extending that, you know, in between her house and the neighbor's house. It's fine, six feet there?
No.
No, it's not, none, okay.
Once it comes up to the rear foundation line of, of the neighbor, she can't, has to drop the four.
That's why it's in blue. The blue's a variance part. The pink she could do legally.
And it's even with the, the garage on her because the garage doesn't count as, because it's a corner lot. And it's oriented to the north, but the town orients it to the east.
Right, Spruce Lane's her legal front, so where the fencing is, is all her side yard until it goes to the back. Foundation line of her house or her neighbor's house. So the pink's legal six and the blue is, has to be four unless she gets a variance. To make it six.
But because it's a corner lot, it's very unique and they, and they consider the, the depth versus the width of the lot. And the narrower depth of, uh, the narrower spot of the lot. The, the front is, Spruce Lane is the whole street, but the front faces the narrow side. So they consider her side yard, which we think it is, cause that's where her house is there, is really her front yard. So the way the town looks at it, it's kinda messed up, but we, we've seen enough of them that they, uh. It, it, it makes sense.
Okay, and we, uh, we met with the neighbors on that side and they, they're fine with the fence and, um. Think they would benefit from the additional privacy on their end too.
It's great to have a fence that somebody else pays for, right?
Yes, exactly.
So the real issue we're dealing with is to grant six foot fence on that side yard so it conforms with the rest of it.
But you can't make that as a general rule because then people that live in a, right, not on a corner lot would always wanna have a six foot fence on their side yard. So you can't make it the general rule. You have to make it the exception, which is why corner lots are always an exception.
Yes, they are.
She wants, she wants to have a six foot section in what she uses and views as her backyard, but the town views as her side yard.
And right now, if it's such a four foot section, that's like wide open to the traffic on the road there, right?
Right, yeah.
So I can understand why you'd want the six for more privacy and that's the motive, right?
That is the motive, yeah.
Even though you've got some trees there.
Yes, um, that blocks a portion of it, but not.
Yeah.
Not the whole thing.
And how long is that part of the fence? Roughly?
Um. Two, is it twenty-four?
Twenty-four and twenty-five?
Twenty-four feet along the back there, I think.
It's not huge.
No, it's not huge.
I think that answers my question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody who'd like to talk to us about fences, corner lots, or how the town views them or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight one one dash three. Upon the matter of request by Rob Cullen, acting as agent for Jennifer and Mike Foster. For an area variance to construct a new front porch with less than required front setback. On premises twenty-six Brett Road in an R two residential district.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, board members. My name's Robert Cullen. And I'm an agent for, uh, or, I'm sorry, I'm the, um, representative for Mike and Jennifer Foster.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Get a little closer to the mic.
Sure can. How's that? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I'm proposing is to, um, remove the existing porch and roof. And expand three feet to one side and three feet to the front. Now, coming out three feet from the front will not protrude past the front porch of the house three doors down. I do have a couple pictures for you guys to see. And when you get a chance. Yep. Sure. We also have a deck on the front of, of, of that porch, which even protrudes farther. So the setbacks on that house is very minimal.
Uh, this would be which one? The next door house?
This would be the house three doors to the right. I think it would be fifty? No, fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty. The look of the, of the porch is going to be pretty similar to the second. Sorry. Tell you what, I have another picture. Pass this around. This is approximately what it's going to look like, except it will have one post on each corner instead of two. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna try to incorporate some of that cobblestone on the corners. Or repurposing.
So the picture that you just passed around, that would be the view from the driveway, right?
That would be the view from the driveway, correct.
And the front of the house would have the railing.
Correct.
Okay. And the pictures that were attached to the application, uh, of, um. One fourteen Broccoli Road, two four, I think it was two forty-seven, uh, Harrington Road. And another one from Westchester Road and then one that wasn't. An address. It'd be like those, that kinda railing, that kinda look, right?
Correct.
Three forty-two Westchester.
Are you gonna be carrying the porch across the front of the house in front of those, uh, three windows?
No, actually, I'm gonna go right to the corner and I'm gonna incorporate the, the roof that's over the bay windows. It's gonna incorporate right into the new roof.
Right.
So I'm gonna go, that pitch right now, it's such a, a, a high pitch. I'm gonna go to, uh, like a, a four twelve pitch. So it's gonna shorten it up.
In the, in the square footage of the porch?
Eighty-one. Yeah, the cor, it'll go from, uh, the corner of the bay to the corner of the house. Which is approximately nine feet. Right now, the existing porch is, uh, six by six, six by five, by six.
So it's, I'm trying to find the, it's not, it's gonna be nine feet wide. It's gonna come out nine feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, it's coming out six feet. We're just coming out another three feet from that.
Okay. It'll look nice.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's gonna look nice, of course.
I did the garage in the back too, so.
Garage looks nice. I noticed that.
Thank you.
Rest of the house gonna be sited to match the garage?
We're working on that.
Working on that? Alright. I noticed it was a different.
That's the next project.
So I thought maybe they were in transition, you know, from the, what they put on the garage, they wanna put on the house.
It'll, it'll look the same.
Yeah, alright. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it to any, uh, public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about porches? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Move on to the last case on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight one one dash four. Upon the matter of request by Diana and Raymond Hanford. For an area variance to construct a new front stoop with less than required front setback. On premises forty-nine Avondale Road in an R two residential district.
Uh, Diana Hanford, forty-nine Avondale Road?
Raymond Tanford, forty-nine Avondale Road.
Raise your hands. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so kinda what started all this was our crumbling front steps. Um, they've been there since, uh, the house was built. We've been there for ten years. And it was just becoming a safety hazard for our young family. Have two young kids, a one-year-old and a three-year-old. And so, um, we replaced that, we s- replaced that and we went too wide. We didn't realize that we needed a, uh, permit to do that. Um, neighbors across the street have a big deck. Um, there's others on our street that have.
Isn't the place right next to you have a big?
A big bonnet.
Yeah, yeah, they just did a nice rebuild. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have pictures of, um, you know, a lot of the surrounding houses that have larger stoops than ours than, that we're even going. And, um, we even got some signatures from neighbors that they're saying that they're okay with us.
Alright.
Putting in the request. Goes on the back as well. Um, aesthetically, we're, you know, it's, it's white house with blue shutters. Um, we're trying to make it very aesthetically pleasing, so, um, composite decking gray, uh, for durability. Uh, don't have to worry, you know, keep up with the harsh climates here. Um, we're doing the, the plastic railings and then the, the steel railings in between. That's gonna be white with the railings in between gonna be black. So it's gonna be white and black and, and gray. So it's gonna look aesthetically pleasing. We're in closing. We're enclosing, um, the front stoop, so no, uh, vermin's get in there, um, so it, you know, it's, we thought this would.
Underneath.
Underneath, yeah. Um, we thought that this would, um, beautify the neighborhood and, and make it, hopefully increase everyone's property value, you know.
Alright, just for the record, let me read in the, uh, uh, neighborhood signatures. It, there's a sheet that says, "I support the proposed variance request at forty-nine Avondale Road." It's signed by David Mayer at sixty-one Avondale Road, uh, Mark Thiel at sixty-nine Avondale Road, Raffel Gann at twenty-nine Avondale Road, Ryan McLean, forty-one Avondale Road, Christine Walshack, eighty-one Avondale Road, Carla perhaps something at one-oh-one Avondale Road, uh, Robert House at one-twenty-four, at one-twenty-four Avondale, Jackie Defendorf at one-twenty-nine Avondale, Diane Maddock at one-seventy-five Adam, Avondale, Jonathan Maddock at one-seventy-five Adam, Avondale, uh, Carlos Diaz at forty-two Avondale, Amanda Diaz at forty-two Avondale, Chris Hartman at one-oh-four Avondale, somebody at fifty-six Avondale, uh, Diane Fleck at fifty Avondale, and Paul and Donna Hennessy at thirty-five Avondale.
Um, I think that it's important to say that we wanted to go a little bit bigger, because what was there, um, prior, it was hard to get the kids and all our bags in and out of the house without one of them almost falling off the steps. So that's why we were trying to go a little bit bigger, a little bit deeper, just so we have room to get in and out of the house.
It's our main entrance into the house, so.
Looks like it might be able to have a couple of chairs out there.
Yeah, on each side, yeah, yep.
The new porch gonna be centered on the, the main door going in?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about front steps, stoops, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter.
Thank you.
And we will be in recess till eight o'clock.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we have the tabled item?
Oh, the table item, yes, I'm sorry, that, that slipped my mind. Never mind that, we won't be in recess. Is there a motion to take the case pertaining to eight Coldwood Drive off the table?
So moved.
I second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We are fully constituted this evening.
Hi, Tim Burns at eight Coldwood Drive. Little refresh our memory. We, we tabled this for the reason of?
I believe we tabled this in July, right?
No, it, it was September.
It was September we tabled it?
Yeah.
That's right, this is November, alright. And as I recall, you had submitted a different suggestion after.
Yeah, the, the, one of the biggest oppositions to it was the fence line that runs along Winona Boulevard. I had originally proposed having it right up to my property line on Winona, and, um, my new suggestion would be to back it off nine feet off that Winona side. Cause again, it's a corner lot, it's a tricky lot, um, and, and one of the things with the property itself is I have a three-season room that was part of the house when the house was built, that's on that Winona side. So I just, that's why I wanted to ask for the six-foot variance, you know, because it's a corner lot, the type, and the linear footage variance.
And we had talked to you about it coming off of the corner of the house and going straight back?
Yes.
And you're still, you still don't wanna do that?
No, a, and the only reason why I don't wanna do that is it, it would come right off the corner of that three-season room. So, so that one side where it's not coming off of, people that are right there on the sidewalk can look right through, right into my backyard, and right into that room.
Unless you had shades in the, in the window.
Unle, unless I had shades, yeah.
Which would be like having a fence.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yes and no. I mean, I mean, you know how it is. I ha, I have a big oak tree right there.
Right.
So I'd still be able to, to get the view of the oak tree and, and stuff. I, I know the neighbors before, they had actually thought my fence was gonna go along. I have a big giant pine tree, but that's not the case. That's, the pine tree's more on the corner itself, and wouldn't be involved in the fence.
Well, if I, if I see your application, your, your revised proposal is to come out thirty feet from the, um, side of that room. And the, as I recall, the concern that most of your neighbors had was that angled portion that went down with no.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the neighbors, um, they wanted that sightline to look down Winona. Um, I, I don't know if it's necessary that the angle itself, it's, it's actually that view of looking down Winona. Which, which I, I'm, I mean, if you, if you stand on the corner of Winona and Coldwood, and you look, you know, you look north down Winona, I mean, that fence line doesn't, it, it doesn't protrude out. I mean, I'm, you know, you're asking me, of course, but, um, you know, to me, that, you know, bringing it in nine feet, I mean, you got, you know, you basically, you have the road, then you have four feet of grass area, then you have the sidewalk, and then you have, you know, three feet that, you know, you can't entitle onto the sidewalk, and then I'm stepping it in another nine feet. I mean, altogether, away from the actual road is, you know, close to twenty feet.
This is similar to the other one we just did on the corner lot, and, and.
Except the problem with this corner lot is that it's not a rectangle. It's a, it's because Winona wraps in. Otherwise, it, it, and on that one, the one that we were just considering a few minutes ago, she's bringing the fence from that back line up to the back corner of her house, and you're talking about going out thirty feet from the house.
This, this is more intrusive for.
Yeah. Why is the thirty feet necessary?
Um, well, if, on the other side, I, I wanted to put like a double gate there, uh, on that fence area, so I could get things in and out of that area. Um, if you look on the other side, what is called my side lot, or actually, it's my backyard, it's a very small area. I mean, I wouldn't be able to get anything, you know, larger than maybe a push mower back in there.
On the, on the right side of the house, facing the front of the house?
Uh, uh, yes, on the right side.
You got about twelve feet on that side yard.
Right.
Oh, you.
But you have to, you know, when you're installing the fence. Huh?
You could get a car back through there.
Hmm.
You're saying on the right side?
Right.
The east side.
Right, the east side.
Yeah, the map shows that there's twelve point two-two feet there on that side of the, of the house. And twelve point one-six in front.
Well, I mean, my neighbor has a fence right along that corner right there.
Right.
Um.
And then there, looks like there's some kind of a fence that, is there a fence there that's coming over?
Yeah, there's like a four-foot chain link fence.
Connects to the back of your house, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you needed a gate, you could put the gate in the middle of that long section from the corner of the house back to the far corner, and then it would be closer coming off of.
You mean, you mean put the gate on the Winona side?
Yeah, if you did put the gate on the Winona side, you're, 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 and again, going, going straight back, I just think it's, uh, this looks better, I think. Looks better and more aesthetically pleasing, especially to your neighbors.
I understand why you wanna follow the angle of Winona. The, the problem that I, I have is that it just looks, it's going to be looking like it's jutting out from the house towards the street and then running. And then I understand it's gonna be nine feet inside your property line, which probably means that it's, uh, at least twenty feet or so from the edge of the pavement of the road, but.
Yeah.
So you wanna put, let me see if I understand this. You wanna put a, a six-foot white vinyl fence along the east side that comes and connects to the house? And then a six-foot white vinyl fence along the north line, and then connect it down to the house?
Right.
And if I'm looking at your map right, the, the room that, uh, is on the enclosed porch that's labeled on the map.
Yeah.
That's just about ten feet out from the house, ten feet by, looks like it's ten by fourteen, roughly.
Yeah, yes.
So instead of thirty feet, what would be wrong going ten feet and then angling that back to that corner?
Um, the only problem is, is, so right on that corner, um, there is a big oak tree. You know, I would say about twelve to thirteen feet away from that enclosed porch going toward Winona, there's a big oak tree right there.
So the fence would run along the inside of the oak tree from Winona, right?
Yeah.
And that would.
No, the fence, yeah, I mean, if I do propose what, what you're saying.
If you went out ten feet, the fence would be inside the oak tree.
The fence would be inside the oak tree.
Or the oak tree from sitting on your porch, the fence would be outside, the oak tree would be outside.
Yes, yes.
And that would be a problem because?
Uh. I mean, I don't know, I, ten, ten feet.
I mean, I, I have a real problem with jutting out, the fence jutting out from the side of the house. You know, as opposed to going back straight like most backyard fences do.
Right.
And I know one of your neighbors liked the fence of lockup that was four feet. But, and I can understand why that wouldn't really go over for you for.
Right, right. Um, I don't know, I mean, you know, it's so the, the fence is coming out thirty feet, I mean, that's on the garage side of the house. I mean, that's, I got the enclosed porch off the backside of the garage, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, to me, it still matches the flow line, but I just wouldn't want the, you know, like ten feet, I just don't wanna, you know, basically have that enclosed porch back there to be able to sit out there in the summertime and basically just look at a fence back there. You know, and, and that's why I wanted the oak tree sort of inside that fence line. I mean, just to give it a little bit more space, make it look a little bit more natural than just looking at a six-foot vinyl fence.
Well, but the way you're looking at it, you don't wanna look at it.
No, I, I, you know, and, and.
On the outside of it, so I mean, there's.
And, and that's why I came, that's why I came in another nine feet.
The tree is how many feet away from the house? Tree's about, what, ten feet away from the house?
Like ten to twelve feet away from the house. It's not that far, cause you can actually, from the corner of the enclosed, um, porch area to the tree, I can actually hang a hammock there.
It's awful quiet in here. Can we capsulize this down to, is it just the tree inside or outside the fence, or? What is, what is the issue? I guess I'm, I lost it somewhere. Well, the, when we had the hearing in, in September, the neighbors, a lot of the neighbors objected and expressed concern about the fence being a six-foot solid fence, uh, being a wall, uh, and running along Winona Boulevard. And they suggested as an alternative, the kind of fencing that was a block away at Mary Drive, which is an open picket four-foot fence with, uh, then a six-foot fence running along the backyard and, and the other side yard. And then there was also discussion about that referenced back to the application about two years ago on St. Paul Boulevard, where instead of a white vinyl fence, he's now got a black, um, fence with pine trees and shrubs that are planted in front of the fence and, or behind the fence, I can't recall which, and.
But it's an open style fence.
It's an open style fence. And so the, the issue here is the height, open versus closed, and how close to Winona. Those are the three issues as I see it with, uh, the application. And, uh, the applicant, Mr. Burns, would like to enclose as much of his backyard with a six-foot fence as possible, and the neighbors, they don't have a problem with the six-foot fence on the north side or the east side, but they have a problem with it on the west side, faces Winona, as I understood. So I, I think, is that a fair summary?
That's very true.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Mr., uh, Mr. President, um, Mrs. Chairman, excuse me.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
If the issue is privacy in your, for your, um, sun porch, there is window technology that lets you see out, blocks seeing in, uh, kind of a two-way mirror effect. Have you looked into that? That maintains your privacy, still gives you the view, and saves the problem of fencing altogether. So the issue's really the privacy of the sunroof. There's, um, shading technology, there's, um, film technology, there's at least several different technologies that's cost-effective, probably more cost-effective than the fence, than the fence that you can apply and still maintain your, your privacy.
Yeah.
Even better than the fence.
When I originally moved in, I did, I did look into the films that you could put on the glass. I mean, it's one thing, I, I do want my backyard, I, I want it to be private. Um, but I, I did look in particular for the screening room. The only problem with that film is when you are in there at night and you turn on a light, like, the, the film will reflect one way, but it won't reflect two. So when you turn on a light or you have a TV in there, everybody can see into the room.
So it works well during the day?
Yeah, it works, it works great during the day to, to reflect general sunlight, but once you have anything in that room on, then it just lights the room on. once you have anything in that room on, then it just lights the room up.
And again, that's where shades would help also.
And what, you know, and-
I'm an advocate for the shades.
Right, one, one of the criteria that we're, uh, required to look at is whether or not there are alternatives that wouldn't require a variance, and if we conclude that there's a practical hardship that's shown such that a varian, variance is warranted, we're obligated to make that variance, uh, the least uh, that will, the least much of a variance as will accommodate the practical hardship. And that's where the discussion about shades, film, going off the corner of the porch as opposed to going thirty feet out comes in is to the extent of the variance.
Yep, I agree.
I just wanted you to understand that.
Yep, I understand.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about corner lots, fencing, open, closed, six feet, four feet, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close this hearing. Thank you for pointing that out to me. And now we'll be recess until, uh, eight eighteen. And now we'll be recess until 8:18. Spruce Lane here. Brett Road. Avondale left. Spruce Lane left. Avondale left. And Noelwood is here. So we have three here. All right. Getting back to order, the first, first application for which the applicant remains present is 112 Seaview Avenue. This is, I gotta find my sheets. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application based on the following findings. First of all, because of the situation with the, the way the property is, there's really no alternative to the variance and still getting some privacy. So there is not an alternative. Is the request substantial? Not terribly, because first of all, it's kind of a hidden neighborhood in a way. I mean, it's enclosed in there and will have minimal effect on the appearance of the areas around. Substantiality of the request is pretty minimal. We've already got some of the fencing in place. And the willingness of the lesee to reconform the figure of the fence, I think, makes this a no-brainer because it's gonna make it uniform and it's gonna be attractive. Because the variance goes on forever, that's fine. There is no effect on the physical or environmental conditions to the neighborhood because it's just a fence and it's self-created, not necessarily because he's a renter and he's trying to have a little privacy back there and willing to do this himself. So on those findings, I would request or submit that we should approve this.
And what you're talking about approving, if I recall correctly, is a six-foot-high fence that's of uniform, either all vertical or all horizontal, and all the same material and color?
Uniform, yes.
Okay.
Because he's saying to approve it as applied for, which is eight foot. So we're gonna condition it to six foot.
He was gonna modify it to six foot across. That's one of the reasons I thought it would be a very doable thing.
Six foot with the conditions that it be modified to look uniformed all the way across the front yard.
Correct.
So I have a six-foot fence, uniform across front yard, all panels either vertical or horizontal, and all the same color. That be right? Second?
One other condition, not only are they're all the same color, but all the same material.
Yep. Okay.
Because right now you have some wood, you have some plastic, so.
Okay, we're supposed to specify the material?
Well, to keep it uniform, that's the whole idea. Because the lattice that he's got up now, the plastic lattice, is a smaller grade of lattice than the wood lattice that he's got affixed to the top of it is a different style lattice. Doesn't look uniform.
Bless you.
Because my question is, what does he wanna do? Does he wanna go plastic or wood? If we're gonna put that in the variance, which should be what he wants.
Vinyl, vinyl.
Vinyl, okay.
All right, so I have approve it with the condition it's a six-foot fence, uniform across the front yard, all panels either vertical or horizontal, all the same color and material, which is vinyl.
Yep.
All right. And that's seconded by Mr. Upson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Antini is absent, but we are fully constituted. And we have seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda for which the applicant is present is 26 Brett Road, right? This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion on the matter of 26 Brett Road. This is the removing the older porch and putting on a newer porch with a setback variance of 12.5 feet. I think it will not hurt the character of the neighborhood. It will not hurt any environmental characteristics of the neighborhood. It is a self-created issue because they just want a new porch. But I believe that it will definitely make the neighborhood and the home look more appealing and more enjoyable to use, and therefore I think we should approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'd like to second with a positive comment to the contractor for a well-designed plan, a lot of information, no questions about how it's gonna be done. Nice job on that, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member is absent, but we are still fully constituted. Next application for which the applicant remains present is the Noelwood Drive application. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. And does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we approve a six-foot fence, solid fence, but not in the area that the gentleman wants it. I believe the alternative would be to carry it from the corner of the porch to the far northwest corner of the property along Winona, and then to the east as the map shows. I understand the fact that he wants the additional area covered, but I do take into account that the neighbors, and aesthetically, I don't think it's nice, but the neighbors are gonna be directly affected. And I think their voice matters and the fact that the whole way it's designed is not aesthetically pleasing. I believe he will get the effect of having quite a bit of his backyard fenced in for privacy. I believe there is an alternative to his glass windows and his porch so that he can secure privacy there also. I would grant the variance with those conditions, that it follows the line of the house to the back corner.
I second that. Any other discussion? All those in.
Is that essentially the same layout as the house on, what is it, Mary Drive? It's a block away.
It's the same layout, but it's a six-foot.
But it's a different, but it's a taller fence. But the footprint of the fence essentially would be the same.
Very similar, yes.
And it's similar to what.
Forty-five degrees to Winona Boulevard.
Yeah. Similar to what she was asking for on Spruce Lane that we'll get to in a minute.
Right, very similar to Spruce.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One board member is absent, but we are still fully constituted. Next item on this tape will be, or next item on the agenda for which an applicant is no longer present is the application pertaining to 136 Spruce Lane, which is a type-two action for secret purposes. I would make a motion that we approve the application. Based on the following findings of fact, the, there will be no possible change to the neighborhood character. The alternatives that don't require a variance really don't exist because of the layout of the lot. It's not a substantial request in that if the town viewed the lot as it's developed with the front being on the north side instead of the east side, then it would be permissible. There's not going to be an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. It's only self-created to the extent that the homeowner desires privacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Wasn't sure who it sounded like it was.
We had dueling seconds.
They get on the record book tonight.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We have one board member absent, but we remain fully constituted nonetheless. The last item on the agenda is the application at 49 Avondale Road. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion regarding 49 Avondale Road that we pass, that we grant this application based on the following findings. It's not really gonna change the character of the neighborhood. There are several front stoops. I understand the applicant's need to replace the front stoop for his young children. There could be, you know, an alternative to make it a little bit smaller, but as the applicant indicated tonight, they did need a little bit extra room for getting out of the house with their two young children. The applicant's request is not substantial. It's not gonna impact any physical or environmental conditions. It is self-created, but I think to benefit the children's safety and the aesthetics of the neighborhood, we should grant the application.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One board member is absent, but we are nonetheless fully constituted. The last item on the agenda for our consideration is the minutes, the draft of the minutes from our previous meeting on October 1st of this year. Has everyone received them and had an opportunity to review them? Anyone have any corrections, additions, alterations that they believe should be made to the minutes as drafted?
I move that we approve these minutes.
All right, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. LaPerry abstains because he was not present. Mr. Scott abstains for the same reason, so. Oh, you were here, that's right, I'm sorry. All right, so.
I do love to do that, though.
Yes, the motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention. And Mr. Antini remains absent, but we are still fully constituted. And we are now adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the ICAHT Government Access.